Yes.
Um, I don't have my fully electronics.
Okay.
Looks like we are, oh.
All right, if you all rise and join me in the flag.
It's my world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before we get started here, I forgot to read the last meeting. Dear Andrew and Meeker County Commissioners, thank you once again for your ongoing support of Meeker County Historical Society. It is truly our honor to be the keeper of local history and be able to share and protect that history. And your support makes that all possible. Thank you Danielle Erickson. Thank you.
She's the new director?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on. We'll move on with the public comment period. Unless Tim's got something, we'll move on.
Get right up there.
Yeah, if you want to.
Come on up.
So Tim Bergstrom, Grove City, just want to say your board chair did a phenomenal job.
Oh, God. Okay, that's.
That was a setup. Commissioner, absolutely.
Hmm, I won't do that again. Moving on from public comment. I'm looking at the board meeting agenda for February 21st. Look for.
So I'll move the board meeting agenda?
Motion by Beth.
Second.
And second by Julie. Is there any corrections, additions, or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the board meeting agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. Andrew, would you walk us through that, please?
Absolutely. We have approval of the February 7th board meeting minutes. Approval of the social services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of the hire of Cronus maintenance worker Stephen Trapp at A-11, 21:30 an hour. Approval of the Cronus campground host Collette Johnson employment agreement. Approval of the hire of Cronus campground managers Robert and Rebecca Schmidt, A-12, 22:34 an hour. Approval of the Cronus regional park rental house agreement for the campground managers. That is the consent agenda.
All right, are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Have we worked with all of these folks?
Yes, they've been with us for several years now.
Awesome.
And I'll just point out that I have a first cousin, Robert Schmidt. I have a second cousin, Robert Schmidt. And I have a nephew, Robert Schmidt. And this Robert Schmidt is not.
How about Rebecca?
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Motion by Julie.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. And Phil. Morning.
Morning. I know that. Does he? Phil Schmaltz, Public Works Director. One item for consideration this morning. Let's consider final acceptance and payment for our federal safety paid marketing project we completed this past year. So you'll see two project numbers there, one ending in 14, one ending in 15. They're both Highway Safety Improvement Fund projects, which means 90% of it was paid for with federal safety funds and 10% we cover with their state aid construction funds. The number ending in 14 was basically edgeline widening. Four inches is the standard edgeline. We install six inch. It's a safety enhancement. It also means we don't have to spend our own money on the four inch paint. So we use it to supplement our budget and improve the safety of the road. The project number ending in 15 is a ground and wet reflective edgeline, so that's epoxy paint. I have a two-part solid end liquid form product with enhanced glass beads. And because of its cost, we recess it into the pavement, so we grind a little groove, put it down below where the plow is going to scrape. So that's why that costs much more per mile to install. We expect to get a seven to 10-year life out of that paint versus one or two years of the low-cost latex paint. Project went on just fine. Everything, we're happy with it. Slightly over the original bid, but well within reason, in my opinion. So I would recommend final payment and acceptance.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the final acceptance and payment for SP 047-070-04 and SP 047-070-015.
I have a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg.
I will second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Johnson to accept the final payment of those projects. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And one other nugget I wanted to share, if you've driven in the last 12 or 18 hours, you know that the roads are pretty icy in spots, so be careful out there, especially in the dark. Some roads are dry pavement and then you have a patch of ice and it's about the slippiest ice you can imagine. Guys were out most of the day yesterday. They started early today. We'll keep doing what we can, but that ice doesn't peel off, so we try and put some grit on it with our sand. That's about all we need right now.
At what temperature does chemical have to have in order to work properly?
So it depends on the type of salt you're using. We use standard salt because we're heavily relying on our sand to give us grit rather than just salt to burn everything up. We're about 70/30 with our mix, 70% sand, 30% salt. I would say at 10 degrees, we should see some melting. It's slow. The warmer it is, the more melt we get. The temperatures we had this morning, I wouldn't expect our salt to be very effective.
So we don't even, do we even do it then when it's cold?
We put down, we need the sand, so we need to make that glare ice get, have a little bit of grit, a little bit of traction. So the sand is what we really want out there. The salt is a byproduct because it's mixed. Sometimes, especially with that wind we had yesterday, sometimes the salt will hurt us because you're making the road wet before the snow blows across, sticking. And then that's where the wheel paths get ice in them. You're packing that moisture down, making ice in thin little sheets. So yeah, it's kind of a game to try and figure out which strategy is best when you have the blowing snow. Blowing snow is worse than falling snow every time, in my opinion, because out here we have a lot of exposed area. And it's going to get worse the next few days with the snow we're looking at and there's going to be wind coming with it, so guys will be out.
So at what point, Phil, do you have kind of like a trigger point where you'll say, ah, visibility is, we're pulling those plows? I mean, is there a?
We do. I mean, I don't have any hard set rules. It's just communication with our operators. Maybe if we hear something from what Sheriff's Department's seeing out there too sometimes. But we watch the neighbors, listen to the operators, kind of go with their gut on that and the state, pay attention to what they're doing.
Okay.
We did that one time earlier this year. We'll see. I mean, we're not expecting those 40 mile an hour gusts like we had earlier in the year. It's just going to be snow that is moving, which makes visibility tough when it's blowing and falling. So hopefully that's not the case where we have to pull off.
My motel. What's coming?
I had a question on the big culvert. Is that still on backorder?
The one on 14?
14?
Yeah, August is what we're hearing from the contractor.
Is that, so we're not even probably, are we going to try to get it done this summer then, or?
August is what our contractor is currently telling us for schedule.
So for the work to begin?
Yep.
But the culvert is still backordered?
Correct. They have a portion of it because they had some material from a project that didn't happen, but it's not enough length to complete our project, so we're waiting until.
I told him I thought the culvert was still in backorder, but he said, really? And I said, well, I'll check.
It's in the queue.
Okay.
So I fully expect that to happen this year. Once the culvert project.
Late summer.
Couple of weeks. Yeah, August. And then we're paying 14, so we want that culvert to go in as soon as possible.
Right, because the plan is to do it all together, right? To get culvert in first?
They're two separate contracts, so we only have so much control. But just we need to make sure the culvert goes in first or not leaving a gap in our pavement or coming back and patching it in. Just makes for a rough road.
How many, how many days' work is a culvert, you think?
I'd say two weeks.
It is.
Contractor comes in, permits to doing it, they should have everything done in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Phil, to all the guys. Take your time.
Yeah, Tom, just stay safe out there.
It's almost March. It's still a March, right?
And your point is?
Thank you.
You know, it's in like a lion, out like a lion.
Basketball tournament?
Maybe it'll be fine.
Oh, I think we're moving on to Mr. Bukovic. All right, yes.
Good morning, Paul.
Morning, Paul.
Social Services. Yeah, the roads are icy. That's why I'm kind of, got behind the milk truck that didn't want to go into the ditch. I was happy for him, but sad that I was behind him. So this morning I have before you a request to approve an agreement for Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services to be the fiscal host for the region Southwest 18 Mental Health Consortium. They've been doing this service since the inception of the Southwest 18 Mental Health Consortium. And they're just really kind of cleaning up rules of the road for what they're doing, providing themselves some protections as well as asking for a 2.5% administrative fee, which is really new for the Southwest 18 Consortium to have the fiscal host ask for that. However, it's well within their purview to do that. Most fiscal hosts ask about a 10% administrative fee. So I think it's kind of a pretty good deal that they're doing it. Plus, everything's still there. They've got the history. And they're also allotting a fair amount of their accounting time to this project as well.
May I ask, Paul, 2.5% would equate to, in a dollar?
Ah, 1.9 million approximately. So I think we're 2.5%, $25,000 to $30,000 approximately.
I was just curious.
Yeah, not, not a lot of money by any means.
And Paul, Mike, didn't we, this is something new to us, right? I mean, we're joining us, or?
No, we've been a part of this since the inception.
It's never charged for the, I don't recall this coming before us before.
No, this is, this is new for the fiscal host to bring forward this agreement. And it really just states the rules of the road and provides them protection for something they've already done. And we've seen this with like our SNAP grant that, that we have with Sherburne County. When they're doing the fiscal host for this, a number of counties as the fiscal agent are looking to have some contractual protections as well as to identify what their roles and responsibilities are. Plus, afford them a percentage of the overall money that flows through their systems as part of their administrative burden. Costs, costs them money to do this.
Sure. However, we've paid them in the past.
We haven't.
I think some of this, and I've seen it on other boards, goes back to the low staffing. People don't have the staff to take on these responsibilities anymore. You know, I've been on a lot of boards where so and so, oh, we'll be fiscal host, you do this. Everybody's having more formal agreements now.
And part of the conversation when they were bringing this forward, folks were wondering, well, why don't we have a different fiscal host? And.
It's not that easy.
Well, like, like any other county, I put my finger to my nose and said, not me. No, I'm good.
Well, that's what I say. It's hard to find somebody to be willing to do it.
Sure, with all the other demands of the job and then to come to their boards and say, hey, you know, we've got extra time. We want to do some more work.
Yep.
When, you know, we're pretty tight-staffed to begin with.
So I've moved to approve an agreement with Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services as a fiscal host agent for SW 18 Mental Health Consortium funds.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifeline. Is there any other questions for Paul or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
You better head home early and stay there a couple of days. You're working from home.
I got new tires on the big truck, so I'm going to play with it.
Tires on the big truck? That's a gotta be a guy thing.
Hopefully there's no catch of traction. Thank you so much for your time.
Good night, Paul.
Mikel?
Geez, you might be done before. That's a record.
Yeah. Mikel Johnson, Human Resources. So I am requesting to have Juneteenth added as a official holiday to both the personnel policies and the 2023 holiday schedule. So the, the background behind this is that on February 3rd, the governor signed a bill to officially establish Juneteenth as a official state holiday. So that also then updated state statute. And so that would go into effect August 1st. The statute now says that no public business shall be transacted, transacted on any holiday except in cases of necessity and except in cases of public business transacted by the legislator, nor shall any civil process be served thereon. So this is something that they were already bargaining into their union contracts as well for the state. And we have bargained it into the ones that we have ratified so far. So the request would be that we add this to our personnel policies and the 2023 holiday schedule. The, the bill doesn't affect, it's affecting until August 1st, however, because we've already put this in our contracts, it would just be an equitable thing to add it then to non-union so that they both go into effect at the same time.
Obviously, I think we got a couple of questions. Because you guys are sidebarring. Do you have any questions on?
I never said that to you when you and Danny were sidebarring, when I was. I'll watch my sidebarring. I don't have any questions.
We were for sure.
Sorry you missed.
I can ask.
I'm just saying. If that's going to be the new rule, let it be the new rule. I'm good with that.
Sorry you missed that opportunity.
I am too now.
You guys are both sidebarring, that's why.
So how many, if I may ask, how many holidays a year are we now at? If you said that, I was probably sidebarring and missed it.
It would be 12 total on years where Christmas Eve falls Monday through Friday. It would be 11 on years that it does not.
11?
Yep.
And this has been the discussion at a lot of boards, and I think the answer was always when it gets signed into. So this is kind of like Veterans Day. The veterans work and everybody else gets off kind of deal. Happens a lot, right?
President's Day, the federal people are off and the.
Yep.
My only question is, if it's not set to go into effect until August 1st, but yet we're going to observe it this year?
Correct. And the reason that I'm requesting that is that our union contracts, because they become effective January 1st, is that the union employees would then receive that. So then this would be that the non-union would receive it as well.
Wasn't in the contract, though, that it's only for unions, it's only set when it is actually in effect for the state? So it shouldn't matter anyway this year?
It, it was when the state adopts it.
Adopts, not in effect.
Well, what happened to that holiday if something changed and it was, and it became, it wasn't a state holiday anymore? Would they still keep it?
I think like.
That's kind of a political thing as far as I'm concerned, as far as the holidays, so without getting into politics.
I think, so one example is Columbus Day. It's a, is a holiday that had previously been a state holiday and had switched to a different day. I believe it was Friday after Thanksgiving is typically what it switched to per state statute. I think if the state was to make an amendment to any holiday that's on the current list of state holidays, then we would probably follow suit.
So they changed the Columbus Day holiday?
To the day after Thanksgiving. Yep. We only have one collective bargaining agreement that still has Columbus Day as a holiday. And that's the highway agreement.
Why is that, I wonder?
Because.
Ah, for.
Nobody likes Columbus?
No, it's snow, snow blowing.
For, for highways because of the snow season and so.
Yeah.
They want to ensure.
There was some controversy about Columbus, wasn't there? If I recall?
The history of Columbus is 800 different than when we were younger, for sure.
I'm not feeling this today.
Maybe you should have sidebarred that one.
That's why I tried to talk to Julie before I tried to.
I think we should have Leif Erikson.
I do too. Can we do that?
We can add any holiday.
Let's not go there.
So it's going to start when then?
It will start this June.
It's.
June 19th.
But even though the state isn't enacting it.
What we've heard from the state generally is that the executive offices will all be closed. The courts will be operating on a very limited capacity, basically only in custodies and emergency child protection hearings. The state will be, in essence, observing the holiday even though the law does not go into effect.
All right.
Is the banks and stuff, or federally are they observing?
I.
I believe it was adopted as a federal holiday last year or the year before.
Yeah, I know. That's right. It was, it was a holiday in '22.
It was, yes.
It's federally here.
It's Cory's birthday that day, so that's another reason.
All right. Looking for, move on from this, so let's make a decision here. For a motion on this update to the personnel policy?
Because the governor has signed this as an official holiday, this is something that the county must, must approve and agree to. But what we're doing here is, are we just nodding in, in agreement with the governor? Or is this a part of a contractual negotiation for this year?
So with this piece today, this would be for the non-union piece. So what the governor signed does update the Minnesota statute. So it does say that public business should not be done on that day unless necessity. The other piece that we've been doing throughout the year so far has been the union contracts. And those already have them, have June 19th in them for the ones that we've ratified so far, so.
So if we don't approve it, what happens?
Your non-union staff will be here and your union staff will be at home enjoying a holiday.
Our non-union staff will be here?
Yep.
Interesting.
So just to be clear, legally, that is not a holiday on June 19th of this year because it doesn't go into effect until August 1st.
Right. So it shouldn't start till it goes into effect, should it?
The policy decision?
I think the conflict we have is, it was adopted in, or the language of the contract says when it's adopted by the state. And of course, it's not in any contracts with our non-union people because of, so we have, that's our conflict.
Well, it's in all the union contracts and we always follow, I mean, our past practice is the word I'll use. I'm probably, Randy's nodding, that's the right word. Has been one, the union, if we adopt something for either non-union or union, we adopt it for the other folks. So as Andrew stated, if we don't do this policy, then the union folks will be off on the 19th and non-union would be required to work this year. So let's do something here.
So after this year then, because the governor signed this, it will automatically become a paid holiday after August 1st.
Correct, yep. My concern with not doing it for both groups is, is a morale issue.
True.
You know, what kind of message that would send. That's my concern.
Mr. Chair, just to move this, move to approve updating the personnel policies to include Juneteenth as an official holiday and add it to the 2023 holiday schedule.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second that.
All right. Paul and Julie with the second. And any further discussion? Everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish here, or the situation we're in? Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the update to the personnel policy to include Juneteenth for the non-union staff? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mikel. Appreciate it. All right. County Administrator.
Only item that I have for report today is that we are going to have a work session next week. There's two items that are going to be on the agenda. One is an update on the county ditch 17 repair work that we, that you had approved a contract for a couple of months ago. And then the other is discussion on our public health and social services departments and looking at reorganization. That's all I have.
All right. Committee updates.
I can start.
Put your finger.
Well, I think we started.
Start over here?
Yeah, you can start over here.
Oh, okay. I thought I did last time.
Oh, you started here.
I didn't want to pick on you.
It's too late.
Time I you were sidebar.
It's too late. You've been picking on me.
Sailed.
Why not?
Put your finger over here.
Did you, did I start last time? Because I don't want to do anything.
No, I, I, I thought I did. I didn't want to pick on.
Your report.
I don't have that much, so it won't take long.
We're good, we're good.
I had Woodland last week. We talked about, what's out here? We had a nonprofit governance, governance training. We passed our budget, talked about our budget. We had a presentation by the outpatient services person that was interesting, talking about the connections and how mobile crisis fits in and all that kind of stuff. There's, we changed the time, Danny. The board meetings are going to be at 3:00.
Oh, okay.
Instead of 3:30. That was kind of my suggestion. That's about it, I guess. We talked about the lease over here. And they were happy with the deal they were offered on the remodel. That was nice. So are they going to meet with Wold or something, I think?
Yep, in the next two weeks, they're scheduled.
There, we got a 5% increase, increase in our, in Vatell contracts, which is our remote. Everybody's doing that, so. So that was Woodland. We had CCT, Paul, and I went to that. Sadly, we lost our director, our CCT director. She's leaving and going to Prime West. So that was the main, that was the main reason for the meeting. It was kind of an emergency meeting. We formed a committee. I think Paul can report on that. He's going to be on that. We sent, we signed a letter of intent for some property that we're looking at for a new garage. That's not very far away. It's, it's on Industrial Drive or something, I think. And that's, you can add to that when you get yours, I guess. We had a hospital board meeting yesterday. We had an urgent care presentation by Jamie, I can't remember her last name, Mel Clovis. Anyway, she's a doctor at urgent care. That's been very, been a popular item since they opened it at the hospital. And they're talking about down the road here, trying to get it to seven days. So that was interesting. We had a presentation on a, some culture training that they're, they're doing. Some of the managers were at some training for that, so that was interesting. They reported on that. And we passed the 2023 budget and are moving ahead with some more work with an architect for a new clinic. And I think that's all I have. I just want to remind everyone that Save Our Tales is a big fundraiser for our shelter. And they have an online thing going right now. You can go onto Facebook and follow the link. And they have some interesting things to bid on, if you would like to do that. Or there's just a place there to make a donation toward the building. So that's what I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Beth. Julie's anxious to go, so.
You bet.
Ain't going to hold her back.
I think I'm ready here. Well, our last committee reports were given on the 7th of February. And that afternoon, we participated in the annual township board meeting that was held here in the courthouse basement. The meeting was well attended by our township representatives and we heard several very informative presentations. That was nice. Then the next day was the eighth. I attended the aquatic invasive specie board meeting. And I have informed the members of what the commissioner's actions had been the previous day, which included we approved the bylaw changes, we approved the grant approvals and the approval of the inspection contract for next year. Today, now, the twenty-first, we have, uh, an extension, U of M extension meeting at one-thirty. And Danny, that's going to be Zoom.
Oh.
They decided because of the weather issue, it was going to be at the fairgrounds, but I just got an email that that now will be Zoom at one-thirty.
Good to know there's a meeting too.
Yeah, yep. So that'll be today now, at one-thirty. Um, and then I have two items to share with you. Uh, no, I haven't received any more Christmas cards. But, um, I did get a cute little Valentine from one of the. But anyway, our auditor.
Forty-nine years I didn't get, ever get a Valentine. Not even from your wife.
No.
Particularly not from your wife.
But anyway, um, our auditor Barb Law, Barb and her husband David Lobbs, their son is Bruce, Bruce Lobbs. And Bruce is a wildlife firefighter, firefighter from Grove City. And he was out in Wyoming and Montana this summer, working for the Bureau of Land Management, fighting, um, several wildfires. And there was a really nice article about Bruce in the Wilmer paper. And I just thought, congratulations to him, our Grove City kid and the connection with Barb and David. So I wanted to, we're proud of him. And then another point of congratulations, even though Tim Bergstrom stole my thunder, uh, we have to congratulate Steve Schmidt. I know we've probably all been called characters before, but Steve sorta took that to the next level and he took it actually to the stage. And Steve was one of the actors in this past weekend's community theater production of Clue. So well done. And that, and I have this article here, if you wanna put this on your refrigerator, I'm gonna give this one to Barb. And that concludes my report.
See, this is how she gets Valentines and Christmas cards.
How did you, oh, they're coming from you. How did you have time, how do you have time for rehearsal? I'm a busy commissioner. I don't have time to do that.
I said, the man must not sleep.
It was, it was, uh, pretty intense, actually. Way more than I bargained for.
He didn't have a clue.
Oh, that was a good one.
I'm definitely gonna laugh. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, so, um. Steve and I attended the drainage training in Alex, which was, uh, the presenter was excellent. You had said that he was excellent. He was. Did a great job. Um, but when he, it was funny, Steve and I were sitting kind of across from each other. And he brought up fish and wildlife and how they might come to one of your board meetings asking to approve. And, uh, we found out that what really is supposed to happen and why they need it. I look over at Steve and his jaw is on the, on the table. I'm, I'd say, oh, okay. We learned something really valuable here today, if they ever come back, but.
The, while the point, I think the point that was brought up is we were on the right track. By not necessarily giving them a wink and a nod on the first try and we actually, we have a right to, to question their authority on some of them approvals and, and they did, I think the thing that, uh, took us by surprise was that, um, they didn't necessarily, uh, they weren't so very forthcoming.
They did not lie to us. They just didn't give us all of them.
But I think, I always knew that, but I think when you go to court in the past, that's happened and you don't win.
If I may ask, what is the authority for them having to come before the board? Is it under state statute? Is it in policy? Is it, did they kind of, and I can connect with the presenter and.
Well, when we asked them, remember the day they were here and we asked, they said they didn't really know. But I know that in the past, a few years ago, we turned one down by a first vote and by the, we came back and voted it back in because and I've read about, did some reading on it. You don't have to, I always knew you didn't have to give permission, but there, it seemed, and you can correct me. It seems as though you're getting a bit of a mess and, and probably not win. I was never under the impression we had to give them approval.
It's, it's kinda like a mediation, I think, is, but I.
So if you wanna change the terms or something like that, is that what you're saying?
Well.
Had to do a taxes. And, um, we had to make a case of why.
That we were gonna lose, right.
And, and, uh, I, I think the, yeah, the point that took me and Paul was that we were on the right track. By, and exercising our proper authority, by where they kinda portrayed it to be that we were out of line to not approve it. We were actually fully within line. And I think that was the piece.
I think I've always understood that.
And, and there is, and there is good reason to question it.
Well, I think it has to be about the money though, right? Because you lose property tax on it, right?
Yeah, that's the way that's.
And I think it depends on what you're talking about, if you're talking about.
Situation.
What situation, right.
Whatever program there.
We turned one down a few years ago, but we came back and, remember that?
Well, that's, uh, go ahead.
It was, it was just a surprise. I mean, there we are, we're sitting, all of a sudden this comes up. The presenter starts talking about this and Steve and I are looking at each other and going, isn't what we were talking about.
You felt like, you felt like, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
So like Steve said, and he, he did it very generously, they just weren't all that forthcoming.
Yeah.
So, uh, so anyway, but that was a good, um, I really thought that was a good session. Um, I, uh, took away bits and pieces that, you know, will apply later on as, as some of these issues come up. Um, uh, we had John Condon there, Phil was there, and Holly was there. And Holly, of course, is, is learning this, trying to learn this thing. Uh, uh, it was good information for her that she'll come draw on at a later time. She'll remember, oh yeah, I remember at this county conference I got that. So I thought it was good. Um, the other meeting we had was a CCT that Beth alluded to and, um, our executive director, uh, took another position. Um, now this executive director, Donna Anderson, is our assistant director here in Meeker and takes care of our Meeker. She has been appointed the temporary because Tiffany has done on the tenth of March. There's no way you're gonna have anybody hired and up to speed by the tenth of March. Um, and there's a lot of state mendot regulations that have to be followed. There are federal grants that we get, so therefore we have other things that have to be followed on a federal level. So, um, this is, this is an important position. We met again yesterday. The, I'm on the search committee. Uh, we finalized the, um, posting and it was posted this morning. So we're hoping that by April first, we'll have candidates that we can interview. We'll see what, what happens there.
And we also, not to interrupt you, but we also have John, I don't recall his last name, but he would now works for the state. And he is at our board meetings and he used to work there, so he will be available to help too. Because it's, it's a bigger undertaking and one thing we learned was there hasn't been any training in some areas. So everything that she did, she did. So like other places, all of a sudden the situation changes. So I think they're gonna probably look at a little restructuring at the same time, which is probably a good idea.
And, and just to give you an example, she used to take vacation, but she would do the payroll from vacation.
So there's nobody else that can do the payroll.
You gotta train below you. You know, you gotta go two levels below you and keep.
And, and to be fair, we've been looking for an HR person for a long time, so, and haven't been able to fill that.
But she has been, she has done everything for the past sixteen years, is that correct?
Thirteen, I think. Is it, it might be sixteen.
Yeah. And the letter of intent that, that, um, Beth alluded to is just a piece of property um, that the EDA and this, in the city of Wilmer would like us to purchase. They allowed us to sign a non-binding letter of intent, so that if someone else comes along, it's kinda like a right of first refusal. They will contact us and say, you guys ready to move on this? If we are, fine. If we aren't, they will move on to that person. Uh, this may not be the piece, property we wanna build on anyway. I haven't liked that particular piece from the start. I don't know what best feelings are.
I know you've said that. I have not been involved in that.
It's a triangle with, uh, of the five point three acres, there's a good acre and a half that's underwater and not usable. And so.
It's not connected to where they currently are located. This is a totally different.
First choice, but it didn't work. There's a building there we wanted to buy.
It was the old hazardous waste building, but the cost of reclamation on that thing was gonna be astronomical. It just didn't make sense. It still wouldn't have been as efficient, um, energy-wise and so forth.
Where is this? Where is it?
You remember where the old Wilmer Airport is?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the square corner by the old hangar that they would like to, like us to buy.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, but we went a little bit early so we could drive by it ahead of time. We wanted to see just exactly, we'd seen it on the map. Well, that doesn't do much for you sometimes. You go see it physically and look at it. So we drove by it and, um, I just, I just, I'm not thrilled about that one at all. So, um, but this one's going into Candy Ohio County. And, you know, uh, we have a very nice building here. Fairly new. Beth, when was that built?
Don't ask me.
I thought you were on the.
No, it was there when I became a committee.
Okay, okay.
Which.
But it's very good. It's in great condition.
Yes.
Um, it serves our purpose more than adequately, so we don't need anything here. Olivia has, what, two buses down there? So they have more or less a garage.
They rent a space, I think, from the county, don't they?
Yeah. So that's about all they have. But Wilmer does have the bulk of the buses. They also do all the maintenance work at this facility. So, uh, the facility they're looking at there is, you know, it's going to be nice. It's gonna be a nice facility. Hospital board, yes. Jamie Clobs, Clovis?
I can't.
I can't. I'm maybe not pronouncing her.
Know that.
Right. Uh, yesterday, and we had election of officers. Beth was re-elected to chair of the board. Um, John Spreader, uh, remains vice chair and Al Leesman remains secretary of the board, uh, of directors at the hospital. And so that's it.
You had a slow week.
Just wait.
Danny?
Yeah. This is an awkward update. I have an update that I missed two committees, so I have no update. So I missed the Woodland Senators meeting and then, uh, there is a EDA meeting that, uh, discussed housing. Were you at that one?
Yep, I was there.
Okay, maybe Andrew can film that one in. You're at Drainage though.
I didn't either.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
But you sent out information.
Yeah, I provided the, the full board with the housing report. The ultimate recap is that, something that I think we all know is that Meeker County as a whole is short on housing. Uh, primarily where the needs gonna be over the next ten or fifteen years is, is looking at more senior housing, um, and transitional housing. And so the, the consultant came up with numbers for, um, you know, for each city across the county and, and then the county as a whole, where they anticipate, um, housing needs are gonna be and some recommendations on, you know, planning new subdivisions in some of the, the cities to provide space for that. Um, so it was, it was a very good presentation. There's representations from pretty much every city across the county there. Uh, and, uh, which was really nice to see.
Was, did every city participate?
I'm not a hundred percent certain about that. All the cities who participated, I'm fairly certain were there though.
Okay, cause, uh, you had to elect as a city to go into the housing study with the county as a whole.
Yeah.
I know last time we had to update it. There was a couple that weren't in, but there was still time. I was, that's why I was curious.
I, I don't recall, as I, as I think about it, I think I recall every city being mentioned. So I'm, I don't know if that means that they all paid for it.
They all participated or not, so. Cause then each city gets their own kinda specialized. But you had to opt, you had to pay per capita.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, figure into this study.
Study, okay.
That was a much better update than I had, so we can move on then.
All right, um, well, I don't have a, a whole lot of other drainage conference. Um, and a lot of the things that were talked about there, John Colb talked about, um, were things that we experienced with the DNR and, uh, and our, through our ditches here. So, uh, a lot of it was, it's good information and stuff that we can utilize moving forward. Um, other than that, and the township meeting, which we're all at. Um, I did have a, one thing I forgot on the EDA update from last time. One thing I wanted to bring up, Meeker, uh, Co-op had come to us in the past and we had, uh, about broadband and looking for some ARP dollars and we had talked about that they, there'd be other avenues. And Lisa did have an update. Um, they picked up approximately two hundred two eighty, three hundred, about three hundred and thirty thousand, um, through state funding for broadband. Um, for Big Swan, Collinwood Lake, Dunn Lake, Long Lake, and I'm missing one lake in there, but. So that, they picked up, uh, it's like five of their areas that were underserved. They did get some funding to bring them up, so, so I just thought I'd follow up with that, that, uh, they got some funding on that. Then the other thing that I didn't do last time was the Vets Council, just some twenty-twenty-two totals. Uh, they gave a hundred and nine trips for, uh, veterans up to St. Cloud VA. Um, two hundred and two passengers. In Minneapolis, they had twenty-five trips and twenty-six passengers. And that's number total numbers for, for twenty-twenty-two, so they continue to serve the veterans community around here. And they're also, um, I just heard in a meeting, I'm trying to think where it was, just a couple of days ago, that they're still looking at, uh, the state, the VA system and the state is still looking at putting, uh, the, uh, clinics. And I know Litchfield was one of them, cause we're, we have a generally high veterans population in this area, so this is one area that they're looking. I don't know, I don't wanna call it a, it's a clinic. It's a part of the VA system, but it'd be a, a satellite clinic or.
Yep.
I forget.
Can see some possibilities here. My brain is turning now where. Center Care owns two clinics now and we're talking about building on a clinic, so it's interesting to, uh, put on the back burner because those buildings will probably be empty in the future here when we get going on the clinic that's attached to the hospital. So it's something to keep in mind.
And this wasn't in a veterans meeting the other day that I heard.
I read it. I, somebody sent me an article about it a couple of months ago.
It's, it's been talked about in the veteran circle, but now you're hearing about it a little more.
That might be something that can be offered somewhere along. So it's just something to keep in mind.
If you hear something, yeah, bring it back.
For sure.
Yeah, it was, it was something about six months ago, we heard through, um, you know, the federal VA had done a, a report on kind of more community-based care in, you know, providing care outside of just the hospitals. And, um, this was one of the areas that was identified in that report as being a potential site for them.
I think I got that report.
Yeah, yeah, I, I recall sharing that.
Yeah.
Would this be something that our veterans director would be able to help?
And he, he knows about it, yeah. He's, he's.
I'm just saying, keep that in mind if it comes up.
Yeah, if we hear about it in other circles, that's why I wanted to.
Clinics there, one at least.
Cause like general, sometimes this stuff comes up in general government discussions or whatever and just, uh, if you hear something but, you know, bring it forward or whatever, so we continue to help out there. Um, other than that, yeah, then, uh, I think we covered everything else, um.
Mister Chair, I have one question for, our landfill is now advertised.
I'll forbid, yep.
Well, and I have a question on that. In the payables, um, Greg goes in here, but in the payables, I noticed there was like seventeen thousand for, uh, uh, carbide, some steel and stuff. It was materials and it was at the landfill. I was just kinda curious if we had some sort of repair out there or something.
I, I don't know.
I don't know the. Not, not yesterday, not being Juneteenth, but a holiday, um. Not, not yesterday, not being Juneteenth, but a holiday, I'm unable to get that question, so I'll check up on that, but.
Yeah, I, I don't have the details on that, I have to.
So it's, it sounded like a, looked like a larger repair, so.
And how long has that been out there now, a week, about a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
He heard it.
He has, he's had some interest.
Good.
I did have a couple, lucky me, I didn't get a Christmas card, but I had a couple of people express a concern that it might not be a bad idea, but what is it gonna do to the rates? And I said, well, we will have no control over the rates, that, correct?
Correct.
When that goes private, that will be up to whoever, so.
If there's nothing else to come before this board.
If there is, we'll bring it on a sidebar.
That's our new word of the day, sidebar.
I will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-four, which is.
So you hear that at court, don't you, sidebar, Judge, can we have a sidebar, please?